Did you get it? I have it on the phone right here or? I know the president.
Did you get it?
Oh, okay. All right, so. We're pleased to be here. Well, my apologies. Okay.
We have it when it's needed.
So. Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I have a motion to reconvene in this session. For most of the conservatives, Democrats, and Mitchel, all in favor. I almost carry such a belief. My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a motion to approve the agenda with the agenda.
Ms. Barry?
Yes. I'm sorry, roll call.
Roll call quickly.
Oh, pardon.
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Morgan? Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Drucker?
Here.
Okay, now, approval of the agenda with the agenda. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Mr. Peters, all in favor. Aye. Motion, Barry. Consider approval of the minutes of September twenty-one and special and the October nineteenth regular meeting. Motion. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Mr. Hamilton, all in favor. Aye. Motion, Barry. Uh, we don't have anybody public comments, and I didn't get any in Peru comments today. So we have some recognitions, and this is just made my heart warm when I saw the, uh, the message come across as what to recognize that varsity football team, approved football bootstraps, and coached Miami Carolina, the players, you know, for their recent donation delivery of approved gift card care package for the family of an opposing team member. Um, you know, it's just wonderful to see that. And then to acknowledge the elementary pre-K two faculty and staff for the pumpkin patch and bringing that alive up on the school ground. Was there anybody here from the football team? Just want to make sure if anything is outstanding being recognized. And two, now to please recognize all Peru Central School staff and staff, the faculty, staff, leadership team during American Education Week, which is being celebrated from November fifteenth through nineteen. Last year and this year, American Education Week is more important than ever as educators and support personnel work tirelessly to keep student learning on track amid a pandemic. Public schools are the cornerstone of our communities, and during American Education Week, we celebrate public education, show appreciation for the men and women who make a difference in students' lives every day. And we can't say too big a thank to you, but it's just been amazing what has happened since March of two thousand twenty and with you and our students. So, um, as much as we can do, thank you. Okay. Superintendent.
Thank you. Um, the first thing we're going to talk about tonight is the superintendent search. Um, and Dr. Davey met with the board earlier today, and we're looking to do the presentation on the process related to our superintendent search. So, thank you, Dr. Davey.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Storms. President Barry, Vice President Mitchell, members of the Board of Education, administrators, staff, and, and community members. Nice to be here this evening, and thank you for inviting us back. Uh, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Julie Jallicar. Uh, she is my, the confidential secretary to the district superintendent. Many of you over the years got to know Mrs. Jackstaff. Um, she was with us for almost twenty years as my, as the confidential secretary, and Mrs. Jallicar has been with us now a few years. Um, so she's been doing a great job, and, and she came tonight to help us keep notes and, and to help be part of the process and assist. So I'll just take a couple of minutes and walk through some of the highlights. Um, again, so we have here the Peru Central School District, District Superintendent Assistance for the search, and we have the, the night hogs, uh, on the, on there for the theme. So we're, we're trying to make sure we, we stay with the mascot as well. So the agenda that we walked through tonight with the board, and we did an overview, and they have a complete packet of information, uh, actually includes, included the following items. They were given an overview of everything, they left with a, with some homework. Um, so you know that, that the board, which is voluntary, is also going to leave with some homework tonight as well. But again, we talked about the, the framework from the, the, the search timeline, um, the, the discussion about the contract and, and what a normal superintendent's contract looks like, the search process, the framework for it, what type of community involvement you would want to have, whether or not you want to have a, a school district on a school community survey to gather feedback for the process. Um, and then to move forward even with, um, the selection process and the type of stakeholder committee and committees and involvement, and whether or not you want to have a public forum, how you'd like to advertise for the search, and so on and so forth. So these are all things that, that will be discussed and also will be made public as you walk through the process. Again, the search of us for a superintendent is a critical position. It's one of the, the most important positions that a district can hire for, and ultimately they, the board is, is charged with, with hiring a superintendent after a, after a thorough process, but then also to help work with that superintendent to then lead the district moving forward. So it is an opportunity for the community, for the school, for the school staff, and the board, and the administrators all work together to be an important part of that process and help make the rights. So that's one of the critical things that is really vital for a school district. In many cases, school superintendents in many years, for example, Mr. Um, Mr. Paul Scott was here for a long time, was here thirteen years, someone you may have been hired or worked with, Mr. Scott. Very dedicated, was here a long time, and is still a member of your community. Um, so, you know, I've had the opportunity to work with him over the years as well, but again, a, a great example of someone who was in your district a long time and had a long, successful career and, and worked with, with the district for a long time in a successful manner. You can also see then not only the process, the form of the, and then ultimately the communication and reaching a successful conclusion. Part of the conversation that we talked about was that we're tonight, again, is November nine, and you can see a variety of steps along the way with not only the desired start date or the desired hire date, which is your April board meeting. We did choose ultimately went to follow your board meeting schedule, so you can see the, the benchmarks along the way. But not only that, but when, what the applications would be due in the, in this process, and again, it's up to the board, they can change it, they can shorten it, they can extend it, and so on and so forth. And then the desired start date, which was the, the end of the search and, and the successful start of your new candidate, new superintendent, was July first, two thousand twenty-two. I will share with you, it seems like a long ways away, but for, for almost all the schools in the North Country, we just finished the end of the first quarter. So think about how quick, quickly those first ten weeks flew by. The days seem to go slow sometimes, but the weeks and months seem to fly by. So we'll use that as an analogy and say, these dates will, will, will come and go quickly before we know it, and having a successful process that I, we're happy to help you with, uh, that's part of our, our, my goal and, and my support provided as the district superintendent for our barbosses. So with that being said, you can see really the framework of the process. The first is really develop the overall framework of, of the process and the, the steps that the board would like to lay out for the community. The, the board is elected to be your representatives, but they also are going, going to want to ensure that there's good participation and, and involvement of the community. Why? The transparency helps validate the process. It's critical. So when the community, the staff, and your families feel that, and even students feel that they're involved and they can buy in, it then solidifies the process and it endorses the selection of your candidate, of your candidate. By having that, it validates the person coming in, it also gives them a great opportunity to come in and then work a, a really positive note and start off and help move the district forward successfully. You can see first with being developed, then confirming, that's confirming the process and the framework, then it's really the preparation process. Again, there's time and energy that happens. In this process, we talked about having a stakeholder committee. Some districts have one, it's made up of just one group, which would have, be made up of parents, students, staff, administrators, and everyone, and community members working together. Some districts have chosen to have multiple stakeholder committees. Um, it, it's up to the board, it's up to, to them to process and, and come up with what's the best approach for this district to have, for, to be made Peru is your own search. So you're going to be talking about that as well as the confirmation of the salary range. Why? Is that important early? Because when you advertise for the position, people want to know what's the salary range that, that they would be applying for. Also to determine whether or not there's going to be a, a community survey and the type of feedback you'd like to have. Then we move forward into January with really the preparation, where you have meetings with the, with the stakeholders, you finalize the questions, you gather the feedback from the community survey, and all that information comes in and it helps guide the board's selection, and also helps guide the stakeholder committees and the participants, so you understand what are the goals of the search and what's the type of person you're looking for. Again, you identify the type of person, and then you try to find the right fit as you move forward. You can then see, uh, in March, according to the timeline that, that was suggested, the board would then vet the different candidates. As a district superintendent, I assist in that. Um, we work locally, and we work regionally, and I work across the state with district superintendents and check references and so on and so forth. It's a very thorough process, but again, you try to find, you know, the best things about the people and what are going to be the areas for the growth. And that's just as important, too. Why? Because you're going to want to find, if you have someone who's a newer superintendent, you may want to put in place some, some, some approaches to be able to help that person be successful and grow in areas that they may not be as strong, and so on and so forth. So that's really important, that you actually vet the, the candidates, and then you bring those strengths and those growth areas to the committee, so everyone has a common understanding. As we move forward, you can then see, as you're approaching through the, the steps in this process, then you move into generally the interview process. Many times, this is the approach that happens, you have a, a pool of candidates that are vetted. The board then selects a number of those candidates and meets with that, that round. Many times, it's screened down from an initial pool down to a smaller pool. That smaller pool is then vetted, and then there's, there's the best candidates that are brought forward to the community. Sometimes that can be a couple of candidates, sometimes it can be three or four, you know, it just depends on the, the, the board and, and having all that information to be able to bring forward to the community, to your, your stakeholders. Um, there's, there's the determination of whether or not you would have a public forum. That's one of the things that I know with COVID, we've been a little bit more hesitant about some of those things. We are starting to have sporting events, we're starting to have the different things. There are some opening up of, of the schools as well. Um, and so that would be something that would have to be at least part of the process and, and again, considered as we move forward. Lastly, the idea of whether or not there would be a third round of interviews, sometimes that happens as well. In some instances, the board will go visit that candidate's school. Other times, they, they may bring the candidate back for a final round of interviews, for final visits with your students and staff, and so on and so forth. So again, it's a process. I'm here to assist the board, and I'm here to help the board develop the search that Peru would, would like to have to, to select your new superintendent. Uh, lastly, you can see that the target would be in April to have the board approve a successful candidate after working through that process. Uh, you can see, you know, the different frameworks that we were discussed, and we can make this available, Mr. Storms, for, for you. We'll, we, I know a copy was sent, and Mrs. Jallicar, um, to Ms. Provost, so, so Sherry, you should. Okay. You should have that, that's something you can make available to your public, to the board, and make it available so everyone can see there's no, nothing hidden. Everything is, is done in, in the open, so that that way the board, the board and the community understand this is the process that we're considering. Lastly, you can see the types of advertisements. This is a general framework that oftentimes we use. For example, a candy ad. Generally, that's a, an advertisement, uh, approach, it's, it's, uh, contract with a newspaper network across New York State. Yes, it includes the Press Republican, but it would also include the Glens Falls, you know, the Post Star. It would include the Altman Times Union, it would include the Syracuse Herald American, it would include the Binghamton Paper, the Buffalo Paper. There's about fifty or fifty-five newspapers across the state, but though that advertisement would be distributed statewide, and generally you choose a Sunday, a Saturday and a Sunday for the weekend edition, so that way it gets the most press. It's a way to expand the opportunities across the state and then, you know, to make the, the position of, widely known. Again, you can see some other areas, Seine is the, the, um, the Administrative Association of New York State. Um, so with the School Administrative Association of New York State, again, it's many times your principal network and your principal organizations. NISP is the New York State School Board Association, again, statewide advertisement. Uh, you have the New York State Council, and that's through the New York State Council School Superintendents. So there are various organizations committed to education, they also have advertisements for superintendents as well. Sometimes districts choose to, to, uh, work and advertise in Education Week, it's a national education newspaper, little bit more expensive, not, not sure if the board would like to consider that or not, but again, something to consider at the process. And again, these expenses can also be co-surratable, meaning the Cooperative Service Agreement aidability. Peru's aidability is around seventy percent, I believe. Is it, Mr. Sapp?
A little over seventy.
Okay, so a little bit over seventy. So the money that you would invest, you'd get back about seventy or a little over seventy percent back on that investment. So it's a way to help support the process. And lastly, generally, we, I do as district superintendent and with, with our administrators and other regional folks that CBS is associated with, we distribute the advertisement widely and electronically. Years ago, we used to mail out hundreds and hundreds of applications and brochures. Now it's done primarily electronically. Um, it's also a little cheaper and, and really effective to get out. But you can see, you know, some of the things that I mentioned was the superintendent's selection process again, and the survey, uh, opportunity to gather information and have real-time data from the community, from the students, from the staff, and so on and so forth. Um, and then the results can be shared with the community to support the process. Um, again, so lastly, you know, we, I will be looking to work with the board in this, and, and again, there's no charge for my involvement and my services or Mrs. Jallicar's, but there is a timeline, if we do follow this framework and we, we work through it, it can be concise, it can become more concise, but we generally try to stick to some timelines to help have that structure support your search. Uh, and lastly, uh, the types of brochures. You can see some of the different information that we're, we've, we've put together in the past. You do have a sample application that, that has been developed and has been utilized in the past. The brochures previously have been utilized again, samples were shared with the board. Um, and you even have, for example, you know, we've, that was one of our searches that we did when we were looking for one of our assistant superintendents. So again, we have a communications department that is co-surratable, so there is reimbursement back, and those services can help be funded and, and be part of your search to advertise the position. Lastly, uh, on the website, you do try to get that information out there as well as social, through social media. Um, it's an opportunity to highlight the district. Many times, there will be a video that's produced. There was a video in two thousand seventeen that we did, and we worked with your district. You can watch that and see what that, see, you know, what were the highlights then and has it changed? And lastly, uh, again, you're also able to live stream the public meetings, and, you know, given the pandemic and the ability to, to have virtual meetings and virtual participation, again, it's a way to ensure that there's the involvement. Lastly, just to the final points that we'll discuss, there is a variety of interview questions that we'll work through and be part of the process and happy to assist with. We would start with some samples, but again, it's the board finding, wanting to, to own the process, to help with the process, and to help the, the community really be, have the process guided by the board. Um, tonight, one of the goals that we walked through out of our meeting with was to identify a contact person. Um, so we, we will work with, with the board and Mr. Storms to identify that person, that's the person that will work very closely with Mrs. Jallicar and myself, to be the, the facilitator between, between CBS and myself and the board as this process unfolds. And lastly, you know, the board was charged with starting to think about the terms and conditions of the, of the contract with the superintendent. That's something you want to talk about along the way. Why? Because you don't want to wait till the last minute, and many candidates will want to know those types of things when they apply, just because there, there's a certain framework that people will be, be working through, and it's generally part of the expectations of the process. Um, lastly, I don't know if the board has any questions?
We have our homework, we might have one. No, thank you very much, Dr. Davey.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
President Barry, thank you. President, Vice President Mitchell, thank you, and to the full board. Thank you for the opportunity to present, and we look forward to working with you. Mr. Storms, thank you.
We're going to move on to our next, our next topic, and that's going to be Mr. Wood, our independent auditor, with an update on the independent audit.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Stephen Wood, I'm a co-owner of Bulgewood CPAs, I'm the external auditor. Uh, we were here in mid-August for a week, um, auditing the books and records of Peru Central School. We just finished our report, I reported to the board earlier this evening. Um, we've issued an unmodified opinion, which means that we feel the books and records of Peru very adequately, um, spell out the financial condition of the district. The books and records here are extremely clean. Um, we want to thank Mr. Sapp and his staff, um, for making the audit itself a painless process. Um, the document we produced is seventy-four pages long, and it takes a lot of help to put that together up here, so we want to thank Mr. Sapp and his staff and commend Peru on a very, very easy process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. And we're always happy to hear that we're a positive, positive move financially. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Can we talk a little bit now about our strategic plan? Um, we had an opportunity to meet with, um, Sean Brady from PRISM, and one of the, we had multiple committee meetings. This is the first step towards our goals. We're a little behind on goals this year, but I feel like this is our first step which will get us there. Um, one of the, and the first slide, which I kind of skipped, is actually in regards to our vision and mission and core beliefs, because our committee felt that the vision and mission and core beliefs were, were fine and needed to stay the way they were. Um, it was, it was, even though we're in a pandemic, we had an opportunity to meet with, um, various groups of people, um, board members, faculty and staff, as well as our students, and I think, again, our students made it as rich as possible, and it was, it was a great opportunity. So what I'm showing you right here is the, is our first steps of, um, where we're actually looking at, um, as our, our main priorities of the district right now, and, um, so those are, um, to create a rich, meaningful, and, um, individualized pathway to student success. Um, that was one of our areas, another area is educating, educating the whole child, supporting student social and emotional and mental health. Um, and then we also have one in maximizing resources, maximizing the effectiveness of using technology resources, implement digital fluencys, uh, and citizenship, um, standards in our district. And so these are some of the areas that as a leadership team, we're going to be working together to establish goals, um, building goals based on those. Um, and one of the other ones is engagement with our students and family and community, build strong relationships with our students, staff, families, and, um, community partners. You'll see those were bold in areas on this particular document, or this particular section of our strategic plan. Those were, um, areas that our committees, including the students, felt were priorities for the district at this point. Um, and I think one of the hardest parts that we recognized after the strategic plan was some of the data points that we looked at to talk about student growth and achievement, um, it's been hard to get our hands around, um, in a pandemic. So what we're going to be working on as, is looking at some baseline data for our students, um, in regards to, um, everything from Acadians in the elementary school, um, to Acadians reading and act, and then we're also going to be looking at NWVA, um, in the middle school and into the high school. Those are, those are data points that we're going to be looking at. Another data point that we're going to be looking at and working as a team to address, there'll be more specific goals to all of these as we move a little bit further down the road, and, um, data points that you'll be able to see longitudinal data on, but it's also readiness, um, graduation readiness, and just looking at a cohort of students in high school to be able to say, these students have, um, are, are meeting the requirements each year to be ready to graduate from high school. So those are some of the things that our strategic plan has, um, has identified as areas that we're going to be looking at. Another area that we also feel is a cri- a critical piece, too, is, is also that attendance of our students, and they're, when we actually look at students and determine the, their, um, propensity to be a student who's at risk for, um, not succeeding in school due to attendance issues, and that's been also a very nebulous type of thing during COVID, during the pandemic. So I guess I'll say to everyone, as we will be, it'll be a whole lot more comprehensive as we move forward, and we'll be able to share some building goals with the Board of Education in the next month. That's our goal as, as a leadership team, we'll be looking at those and determining how we can actually not only use the metrics that, that we discussed, but ways we can look at those metrics in the future, because we're working with NWVA and, um, Acadians as well, and then also working with the High School Guides Office to establish those areas where we can address the, um, the ready, the students readiness to be able to graduate from high school. So, and then we also are going to be working with the board to address an additional goal. Does anybody have any questions for me in regards to this first step of the strategic plan? All right. So I know that it's kind of out of, of the sequence of the board agenda, but I'd like to, um, introduce someone to you, because if, oh, we didn't have to take this whole meeting. So it's my pleasure to introduce to the Board of Education and the community, uh, Mr. Tom Tregan, he's here in the front row. He's actually going to be our, um, substitute principal in the, um, elementary school while Mrs. Sexton is on the lead. So, um, he actually met with me on Monday and, um, will be approved tonight, hopefully, fingers crossed. And, um, we had, he actually came in today and worked with Mrs. Mason in the intermediate building to start that process and also start to get to know some of the staff there, so, welcome.
Thank you. I, I just would, I appreciate the opportunity. I graduated from this school in nineteen seventy-six. Uh, it's really coming home. I'm so pleased to have met so many staff members today. It is clearly, I, I understand it was a short period of time, but a dedicated staff that, uh, is, is working very hard under difficult situations, not a question. Parents are, teachers are, all staff members are, and certainly administrators are, too. Uh, but, uh, it is clearly a staff that is interested in doing the very, very best for the kids, and I'm really looking forward to doing the very best to support the work that Mary has already done, this leadership that the team has done, and certainly I've enjoyed my, uh, opportunity to visit with, uh, Sarah here from the, uh, the lower elementary piece, and, and she obviously, uh, though relatively new to administration, has a lot to offer this district. So there's just lots of quality people, uh, throughout, and, and, uh, so I appreciate it. I'm going to work real hard and, uh, figure out lots of stuff, and I hope to enjoy, and, uh, and I always, of course, love working with the kids and an opportunity to come back to a district that gave me so much, uh, in, uh, in my lifetime. So it's kind of fun, I hope.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Sure.
Uh, I've worked as a colleague, one of her colleagues with Tom for many years, and I think that actually is the technology instructor of all our.
You were.
Uh, we go back a long ways, but I didn't realize you had graduated from Peru, so welcome back to Peru, and we're happy to have you. Thank you.
Well, I also want to say I appreciate you digging right in today, working with Mrs. Mason, and getting around and meeting people. I think that's going to help out a great deal, making, making people feel more comfortable in the situation. Um, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's me. Giving over construction, okay. Um, and then we actually, maybe Matt will even talk a little bit about that in his report, but, um, we are fortunate to, um, finally be in our kitchen in the elementary school. And I want you to know that I did go around and take some pictures of some of these spaces, but the pictures don't say as much as that we're really would have done. So maybe we can do a walk around with the board, one of the next board meetings, so that things are a little bit further along. Um, but the nice part about it was, and I think that one of the, um, best parts of the fact that we're actually working out of the kitchen right now in the elementary of the fact that we're actually working out of the kitchen right now in the elementary school is when I was walking up to the intermediate just yesterday, following a bunch of, I'm going to say maybe first graders, but they could have been kindergarteners. They were walking down the hallway and they were all commenting that it was nice to smell cater tots. So I think that that says a lot for what's happening on our school right now. And I think that after having a conversation with Mrs. Chilt, she's going to have to come up with some creative ways to realign the way the kids go in to get their food because that's going to be a little different for them. But we definitely are there. There's still things in the, in this building project that we're not done with. And I think that's fair to say. Things are still backordered, if you will, or supply chain is still part of our problem. One of the most annoying things, I definitely would say, intermediate staff have mentioned to me and a few high school staff, are our clocks that we have, our intercom system. We're, we're still waiting for some of those to come in. And so we're working right now with technology, with the tech department, to ensure that their safety in classrooms is still taken into account where they're able to make announcements over our telephones and also emergency announcements that way as well. Some of the things we're still waiting on too, you'll see, like the, the doors and things like that are better. And we're getting those things closer to being done. It is nice to see the lobby, the intermediate lobby, the gym lobby when the kids come out. That's, that's looking much nicer with windows. Everything's been painted in that area. So those types of things. So we still have some things that are delayed. And I think that that's, you know, part of this process. I mean, I speak of the kitchen being used and everyone's thrilled. I've had the monitor cafeteria staff come in. They're happy they're not pushing things up the hill anymore. But on the same token, we're still using some old countertops and things like that because we, and it's not all that. It really comes down to that particular aspect of the supply chain. But that's pretty much where we are. And maybe we can do a walk around in one of the future meetings just to give everyone that, an actual visual. It's not the same, in my opinion, when you're in the wrestling area. When you, when you're taking a picture, the picture doesn't, doesn't give you the same feel as it does when you're actually in the space. So I think that that's an important piece.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Skipped over that.
And now, here's the Peru Association of Teachers.
Good evening, everyone. You don't have to turn around. Look me in front of students every day. Look me in front of adults, then I need to have my notes. So bear with me. On behalf of PAT, I'd like to point out some impressive actions being taken by our members over the past several weeks. Since the beginning of the school year, we've been short-staffed. That's not just a Peru problem. It's an issue in almost every school around the nation. The great thing is, the staff, both PAT and administration, pulled together, thought outside the box, and we were able, able to open school even with the staffing shortages, hoping it would be a short-term fix. It wasn't. Since then, exposures, quarantines, illnesses, emergency leaves, and other various situations have risen, causing more staff to need time out of their rooms. These situations have left all buildings without teachers to fill classrooms and monitors to provide lunch, cafeteria and playground supervision. On the elementary side of campus, teachers have given up their duty-free lunches along with their planning periods on a daily basis so the children are safely supervised. This happens almost every day and makes for a very long work week when you aren't able to take a breath, use the bathroom, or plan during your workday. This causes many teachers to stay later and/or take more work than usual home in order to get their job done effectively. This extends the workday and takes away from precious family time, something I think we all value and appreciate just a bit more these days. Also, on the elementary side, our academic intervention service providers and our related service providers are pulled from their normal intervention service instruction time to cover classrooms. This has to be done in order to make sure classrooms are covered. But it does take away from the interventions that these kids so desperately need. On the junior high side of campus, spreadsheets are emailed daily, begging for coverage for those classrooms that don't have a teacher. Thankfully, teachers have been giving up their daily prep and lunch periods to cover the classes. But again, this does cause extra work at the end of the day for these educators who aren't able to get their normal daily tasks done for their own students. The most impressive thing about this group of teachers is that they do it with a smile. They do it for the kids. They do it so Peru Central School District stays open. Because of the selfless gift of these, of the time that these teachers are so willing to give, our students are in school. We value education. We know how important in-person learning is. But we're human. And working an entire week without a break, without a minute to ourselves, without time to regroup, is taking its toll. Teachers are working up to twelve hours, twelve-hour days, easily, just to catch up for the time they are donating to keep our doors open. Check the parking lots before and after school. You'll see. And that doesn't even account for the time put in at home or on the weekends. We need you to know that. We need you to understand that as much as we love what we do and as much as we value the importance of in-person learning, we are getting a little tired. Not just tired, exhausted. This teaching year, as you know, is like no other. I guess you could say the lingering effects of COVID-19 are now felt in the classroom every single day. The educational climate is more complex than it has ever been. The year and a half that we spent teaching remotely and hybrid has caused delays in academics as well as behaviors. And the transition to in-person learning has been more challenging than anyone could have imagined. Again, this isn't just a Peru-New York thing. It's everywhere. Every district, every town, every city, every state is seeing the same demands. As, as educators, it isn't in us to say no. Our job is to make things happen. We are the masters of flexibility and adapting. We are doing that. The district is open because the members of the Peru Association of Teachers are giving one hundred and fifty percent, not more. I say this to you tonight not to complain, far from that. I say it tonight so you know, so you understand and you can appreciate and value just how dedicated this staff is to our community and our students. As I said in the beginning, these actions are impressive, and it should be noted. The next time you see an employee of Peru, please make sure you look them in the eye, see the exhaustion they're trying to hide, and thank them for giving everything they have to their students. Or if you have a few minutes, ask them how they're doing. Let them tell you their story. I'm positive it will make you proud of the outstanding efforts going on here at Peru. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the administration report. Can you fill the page with voting and broadly?
Yeah. I just have a couple sheets. Basically, I wanted to just break it down into challenges, the buildings and grounds, departments facing, things that we're trying to do to overcome the challenges, good stuff that we've done, and what we're planning to do. A lot of the challenges are echoed off of what Mrs. Thurgood was saying. So this is a, this is a grind, the COVID thing and the pandemic. And it's like more of a marathon than a sprint. And it's, we're starting to show. So every day is kind of touch and go. Mr. Saff and Mr. Storms know that because I kind of go there, card room. They're good at listening. But every day, we're kind of like making it up on the fly, filling in blank spots. People out, whether they're out from personal reasons, injuries, or recently, we've had two weeks in a row here with a lot of quarantine and then actual positive cases. So there's been a couple nights where we've been out in almost, you know, like six custodians in the district, which is a lot. So when you do that, you're effectively asking the other custodians to help. So you're now having one of those twelve areas, so they're like half as speedy. And it shows. The staff have been, in my opinion, very understanding. And I thank them for that. And thank the PAT for that because they get it. We've also, actually had certain monitors and aides that have helped us, whether it be on the clock. And I've had others that have just called me and been like, hey, Matt, we hit the garbage in X, Y, Z room, which is a big deal. So that's good. So the cooperation is a positive. We get a lot of cooperation from the custodians also. Again, the grind of the COVID, the COVID pandemic. Little examples that you wouldn't think are a big deal, and they just manifest themselves as problems. You know, like we turned the bubblers off in the drinking fountain. You know, they don't want kids spreading germs. Seems like a great idea. It probably is a great idea. But it just creates stuff that you wouldn't think of, like extra garbage, extra bottle fills, cups, just things that compound themselves in a normal workday. And you wouldn't think about it, but if you listen to the radio over the course of the day, there's probably at least half a dozen calls on each side of campus for each daytime custodian to either do cups or water. And it's just like, it just stacks up and it starts to just, I can feel it in the staff. It's wearing on. The cafeteria spacing, that's been a real drag. You know, six-foot spacing, we can't have the normal tables, as you may or may not know. That, that creates a cleaning issue. Last year, we had the same issues. But somehow, I think it's just the time period. The second year, we've gone like an over. But we're, we're doing the best we can. Breakfast in the classrooms is starting to, again, manifest itself and more problems. There's just more garbage. And it just creates extra trash. And it's not extra trash like in one caf-- if it was just in the cafeteria, it almost would be easier. But it's spread out. It's all over the place. So each classroom is like maybe four or five times the amount of trash that you would normally have before COVID. So it creates more work. Again, I had, and I else, just what Trish said, not complaining. Just making, it's important to have an awareness. Because they're doing a good job considering the circumstances. So what are we doing about it? We, we have directed to the employees that we're not going to grant vacation unless school is not in session. And just made it known that we need to man the ship. And I've been banging on that drum since day one of this, that having kids in school is good for our business, buildings and grounds. It's good for everyone in here, obviously. But it's important that we keep telling our staff that. And they've been doing a pretty good job responding to that. Again, they've been cooperating very well. We have been actively placing ads for help wanted. And that has been discouraging at best. We haven't had a lot of good candidates, if any. And that continues to be difficult to attract good candidates. So, and what I've been doing and with Mr. Saff and Mr. Storm's help is really just kind of prioritizing what are the most important things for health and safety, right front of us, which is difficult. You like to be proactive and take ahead. Jim, I mean, you can really do that because he'll come to me and, Matt, how can we do this? And I, I can't do all of it, which is difficult. But we're trying to just prioritize the stuff that's right front of us, that we know is a problem, and take care of them. So enough of the complaining and belly aching, some of the good stuff that we've done. We had a difficult sports season from the grounds aspect because we lost our, our wide mower. That went down. It was almost twenty years old, so it was expected. I told my head grounds guy a wall, I was playing chicken with that mower. They beat me. So they went down. So we struggled to keep the fields in tip-top shape. Our sprayer also went down. Again, we made it through the season, but it was not without challenges. One of the good things we did, we were able to seal all of our new concrete that was installed over the summer. So that just prevents, protects our investment from the salt that we're about to dump all over. We were able to utilize some extra materials from the capital project to install wall pads in a room, which turned out quite sharp. Again, that's kind of like some of the extra stuff that we don't do on a day-to-day basis, but it turned out nice. And it was a good way to just use those materials. So just highlight that. We completed our fire inspections in October. That is a time-consuming process from an administrative standpoint and also from in the field because inevitably, we find things that need repairs. And so we're actively going through that right now. And the custodians, again, we're just, they're just doing their best to maintain basic functions. What we're working on next, we're getting ready for the plowing season in the grounds. We just reseeded and overseeded all the athletic fields so that by springtime, we have good new growth. I mentioned we're working on the punch list for fire inspection and fire-related items. We are working to replace a classroom's lights that are quite old and we think are giving us trouble. So that's kind of a big process, big job for us inside the department. And we're getting all our boiler rooms ready for a bi-annual inspection. It's also a, well, not unlike fire inspection, but it only happens every two years. So we're doing that. And that's my report. Do you have any questions, concerns? Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm here tonight. I'd also like to just start off by thanking my teachers and my staff for all their support for a fantastic start of the school year. It hasn't been easy, but they have shown tremendous positivity and enthusiasm given what we're going through. So I, I am grateful for them and for making my transition to Peru one that's been rather successful. The pumpkin patch I'm here to talk about tonight, we had a pumpkin patch and we have the Fall Festive Parade this month. And it has turned out to be two of the best days ever for our students. That's what I keep hearing. So the pressure is on to make Funny Fridays a weekly event. But the pumpkin patch was born of the desire to bring field trips to our students since we really can't go out right now. So Rebecca Corrie, who was one of our pre-K teachers, came to me with the idea of having some pumpkins brought in for the pre-K, at which point we thought, why not just do it for the whole primary wing? And we had Walt come over and deliver five hundred pumpkins to us on a Friday a couple weeks ago. Because of the rain we had had, the irony was that there was no heavy machinery we could put out there to bring them off the trucks. So all the teachers jumped up, were on the backs of the trucks, inside the pallets, completely filthy because unbeknownst to me, the pumpkins weren't clean. They were all coming right out of the patch. So they were covered in mud. The teachers didn't care. They were in the patch, or the patch, in the truck. And they were unloading all of these pumpkins. And it was a really amazing thing to see at eight o'clock in the morning. I wasn't sure who would arrive early. We had easily over twenty teachers and aides out there on the back of the truck, emptying all these out. And the teachers had brought in hay bales and corn stalks and decorative ideas along with some of the flatables. And we made a legitimate pumpkin patch. And it truly was just an event. The joy in our teachers, let alone our students, was really fun to see. The teachers were, I've got videos where they're just giddy running out there with their kids because it was fun. And it brought back a little bit of normalcy in the past eighteen months of what we've been going through. So, you know, it was really just an event that obviously can be done annually. I thought it was a great thing for us to do. Going to a pumpkin patch is great, but bringing it here just kind of brought a little bit more of a home feel to it. And it really worked out well. The kids came out on a rotation. They got to pick their pumpkin. They got to run around. We got music playing. They got to pose with new flables. And they took class photos, individual photos. We kept distance as best we could. We really made it safe, and it was a fantastic experience. And then at the primary wing, our response to Halloween this year was to do like the Fall Festive Parade. So it was a little bit different, but they could wear anything that reminded them of fall. So we had a variety of costumes. And, you know, the kids got to have a great day full of activities in the classroom. They made little grab bags. We organized a trick-or-treat out along the backside of the school where we have like a piece of candy. But then mostly donated school supplies. So they got pencils and crayons and glue, and glue sticks and, you know, bookmarks. And they were so ecstatic. It was like the most amazing thing ever. So they walked all the way around. They ended with a big bottle of Almer's Blue in the main lobby, which we joked is because on my end, Jamie, Kevin, Olivia, Ducat, they're the blue that holds us together. So they got the glue. So it was a really, you know, fun, you know, day. They ranked that even better than the pumpkin patch day. So I have this, you know, level of, I don't know, excitement to maintain every Friday if possible. So I have a little tiny video. There's a video attached to the board minutes. But then there's also this little video that I put together just so you can see a little bit of what it was like. of what it was like.
That's what I'm saying.
I hear you.
Inflatables inside and outside the school, which was really any touch.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So like I said, there's music for that, but if you want to go online and see the videos, it truly was a lot of fun. Any kind of, I'll see, I feel like we can reach more kids right now, we're going to make it, so thank you.
Thank you. And thank the staff for, for, for the thought of the video that came to the board, that was really good.
Absolutely.
Okay, consent agenda, have a motion to accept A through K.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second. Mr. Server, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fourteen, A through H. Motion, Mr. Mitchell.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gray, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda, fifteen, A through O. There's additions on L and the additional M and O. So now a motion. Motion, Mr. Mitchell, second.
Second.
Mr. Peters, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. And sixteen. Have a motion for sixteen. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamilton, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. New business. Mr. Crowe, I think we should do these A through D separately.
Yes.
Okay.
Are you not sure if you are ready to fill in, continue to comment yet or not?
Um, no, we probably don't have a TVD until we have a discussion, but at least we're, yep. So do we have a motion for A?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Server, second. Mr. Peters, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I guess we have to have a discussion about the snow day delay early releases.
So one of the things that I think is important to talk a little bit about is where we go this school year when it comes to snow days. Obviously, delays are a little bit different, a delay would be a delay, but we're starting to talk about snow days and it was approved that by state end that we can actually use remote days and do remote construction on those days. I know that that has been questioned in the past and has been a concern by some parents. So I think it's important to have those conversations as a, as a group to determine how we move forward with this particular school year, or is it a combination of the two? We have those, we have four days in our calendar which are devoted to that last year, those days were placed at the end of the, in May, and so teachers ended up to have, teach those students to have those days off, but I think it's one of those things we need to adopt.
And I think on the calendar, it was proposed that to want some of them, if we used remote days, some of them would go on to the April break. Is that correct? So the April break might be almost a two-week period, actually will be a week period. I think the only concern would be if the weather was such that electricity was down in certain areas. But this would at least give some positives and a continuum for students and then we'd know the expectation that this one's going to happen in April.
Also family, also planning, yeah.
Yeah. Definitely. Any other?
Are you, just to be clear, you're suggesting we have remote days and snow days in order to put those four days in April?
For us, the calendar.
Well, there was a, on the back of the calendar, I believe, four days were added date from, weren't they?
I believe that's what they are.
Yeah, and that was, you know, situation one, that if we used snow, emergency days, not snow days, emergency days, that they would be added to the April. But there was also the, the situation, if we had emergency days and we had to go over four, we start chipping away at April break during that, that week after Easter, some of those days would be lost and kids would be coming back and stop to be coming back.
The only question I would definitely have is if we're in a position where the snow is that heavy and we need to not have school and people can't make it to the building, how do we have adequate technology resources for our teachers to be able to remote in from home? Because we can't expect them to come into the building necessarily if the road conditions are not unsafe. So that would be one of the concerns that I have is that if we look ahead to make sure tonight needs, that we can fully address them, because that would, I won't put one teacher or one classroom of students on this advantage, but not being able to have that remote option, if that makes sense.
I consider it to be power, because I think it's a little power, a little power piece that all those kids would want to have.
Well, that's what I said, you know, there would be that situation where there would be an emergency day when the power was out, so you wouldn't have that as a remote day.
Well, can we ask--
So you're just putting the district down when you're one part of the district, because I'm trying to just kind of analyze this.
No, she's, I think there, it's, if there was just a traditional snow day, for lack of a better term, it's a little, the roads are going to be wet, but there's not, we don't have any reports of electricity out here, anything like that, people are safe at home, likely they would be on a normal snow day, then they would have utilized a remote option to provide instruction so they don't have to burn a snow day is for emergency day, is what she's saying. But if there's a case where there isn't reliable electricity, then, or internet is down, you can't expect it. Everybody would have to be off, because then it would create a situation or based on it. So it's going to be an all or nothing. If everybody's not capable of it, everybody doesn't have the resources in place, but we need to know, we, I know we've done a technology survey for our students, so we kind of know where our areas of needs are for our students that don't have reliable internet, but I don't know if we've completed that for staff, if they need to work from home. Because they've come into the building in the past and I just, it's something that's unsafe, I think. Traditionally, we would let our staff just obviously stay home, we don't want to put them in a position where they're suddenly on ropes and we do, obviously.
We could definitely review that and the piece in regards to staff, in regards to their connectivity at their homes and that report back.
Please, thank you.
No, because on the calendar, it did have emergency day options, so I don't think we ever finalized anything with, with CSEA and PAT and PAC. The ability to use remote days for instruction, if we did, we would be giving back April 11, 12, 13, and 14, so that would be a whole two-week vacation period for people. And May 27 adding another one on to the more of it. If we did not and we had to take back, we'd start, you know, we'd start taking away during that April break period, April 22, 21, 20, 19, that's what I'm reading on that, what was put out on the calendar. And then giving back, if we had to give back those days, it would be around May and would be a couple of days prior to April. So I guess it is an input.
But I think the interesting thing is when you're, the two things you're referring to, too, are, you know, if you're, if we're going with a remote option and there's never the need to, or the likelihood of us ever going down the road of having to take days away--
Right, right.
--would never be an option--
Right.
--because, because of that. And then I think the other is, you know, if it, obviously, if we have weather that's letting out, you know, knocking out power, then we're going to have to close, and I don't think that we have enough of those that are going to, I mean, regularly have that happen inside, that wouldn't happen.
Right.
So it's just, you know, I think that the confusion or the lack of clarity, I guess, is the better term on that particular calendar, just needs to be addressed.
It does, it does.
You know, so that I can get something out to parents and the community in regards to that. So if I'm hearing you currently, you'd like me to reach out first to staff to find out their, their ability to have connectivity? And then are we saying that we would have a combination of the two, or are we saying that we really are going down the road for a remote, a remote option in the event unless there's no power, we would go down that path and we have a remote as the option?
Right, it's five versus emergency. Right, it's five emergency.
Yeah. Is it actually advantageous in the teaching process to teach on a separate, I have no idea as to.
Well, I think that's one of those things, well, it'll be conversation to fairly duck, it'll be interesting to see all the people that if they don't have the ability to do that, you know, and I think that it's one of those things where we don't do it as frequently as we were doing it, I would, let's hope we have to stay out of having to go into the remote world. So I think there will be a bit of a learning curve for our kids, if last year was a little bit more seamless because they were used to doing it, and--
So, I just got this one, so we had several families that were having, having access. We took our buses out, it was wired by, parked over by that before, and a couple other spots, so if the roads are bad, are we going to still send our bus drivers out so that this connectivity, these families that don't have it?
Aren't they still assigned a KJ device?
So we definitely are still working with--
So they still have the devices, the, but those didn't work in all the areas.
No, you're right, you know.
So, so if you go to Pizzol, when you go back to, going back to the power outage part, that, I mean, you could have this part of town, you go to the village, you could go to a new part of town, we could have power, put out towards, you know, you know, the park, roughly Pizzol, they may not have power. So how are we going to assess, I mean, we would be in contact with NICEX, would you be aware of the altitude in our area, and how are we going to assess that situation?
Well, I think, don't, aren't we notified, like, for that stuff anyway, especially if there's anything air fierce with the bus angle, if there's trees down or power, you know, if there's any kind of safety issue, don't they let you guys know? Like if the roads are really icy when the plow trucks are going out, don't they, on what?
I believe so.
Yeah, I don't know if you can actually, oh.
No, I think, but NICEX could, could be on the list of saying, you know, if the power, you know, tell us. I mean, you can also, you can also go on a NICEX website and tell me where the power is out.
Yeah, you could, you could see--
You could see it all, yes.
You know, that with combinations, because we have the, and I just, it doesn't have, like, we would go to that place down--
Yeah.
So we have to make some kind of, make sure those families have the ones that this will--
Yeah.
I may have missed, we have plans to reach out to families and get their feedback.
So we currently have set up a survey to families and we know what families have problems with, with Wi-Fi?
Yeah, yeah, I don't mean technology survey, I mean, so if I'm a parent with a child who suddenly doesn't go to school, now I'm screaming for someone to take care of that child because I still have to go to work. I'm not necessarily thinking about now, I have to find someone to cover the care of that child, and now I have to figure out how to get that kid educated and online and do we know if parents want that, I guess is my question.
It's good, I know, it's an uncertain, an ask. Because it's going to create a hardship that basically has to do, if it creates ease if you want it.
Well, the trade-off, there's no net benefit to students when it comes to days in school, so the question isn't necessarily, do you want a snow day or do your kid need to do remote? It's, do you want a snow day and not have your child do anything, or do you want two weeks in April? And I, right, you might look at-- Yeah. But that's the real question, and I know some parents only get two weeks of vacation.
That's right.
I think that's a, it, it may be more palatable for families to just address the snow day as it happens.
Mm-hmm.
And look, I'm all for, you know, two weeks in April, I guess, but--
Yeah, because I think this was very confusing when it went out, and I don't know if any parent asked questions about, you know, here's the options for emergency days, that the ability to use, you know, the remote days and add five days back in, one in May and four in April, or if we had to give back, it would be around May and a couple of days in April, or if we had to take them away, I think that's always the concern of parents.
Right.
Because if they paid for a vacation, if they paid for flights and so on, you're not going to get the kid in school.
No.
Because when you start taking away those days in April that are, you know, Thursday and Friday, that, you know, could be the Thursday and Friday, well, first of all, Friday, Thursday, Wednesday, Tuesday, those were the--
When did that last, that happen recently?
What's that?
Uh, where we've taken days away, I think that--
Uh, not for a while. It's happened--
When COVID first hit, we had to work during that April break.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
If you look at some of the tri-lexials, when they do this two-week break in April, that's hardship a lot of families, like you said, they have two weeks of vacation a year. And also you look at the educational process, as far as schools, look what they're looking at in that extra week. And I think, isn't your recent exams are coming in at the end of that?
No.
In April?
No, not till--
Does part of May?
No.
Almost, yeah.
The three through eight exam.
I thought it was a state test, is that right?
Three through eight.
So, so are you supposed, that extra week, that you've got time to those tests?
Uh, right, it could be, I don't know when the, I don't have the calendar to look and see when, but--
Three through eight.
Three through eight test?
I don't remember that.
I haven't looked that far ahead, because last year was, you know, okay, you could possibly have part of this test.
Yeah.
Usually it's in April, usually it's the first week in April for ELA, which would be prior to the, the vacation. And then it's usually in May, the math comes in May.
And then science.
Yes, and science is in June.
Is it?
Yeah.
That's the final.
So--
I think we're going to play with the parents, a lot of families, a lot of communities, and wants to make our decision.
I think we're, yeah, talking to the staff.
So, so survey the parents and also surveying the faculty--
Talking to the staff.
--in regards to their connectivity.
Yep. But I think parent, you know, when parents see that something could be taken away and they've already planned an April break, they're going to say, whoa, if I could get that little bit more, I will have to take the flight, I have to drive down to such and such place or whatever. And who knows where we're going to be in April, but that's--
Yes, I'll work with the leadership team on those two top, those two pieces, and I'll get back to the board and Friday update in regards to what results of that, and then I'll have to make some kind of amendment to the calendar or some kind of clarification of the calendar in the December meeting. Let's keep our fingers crossed, there's no big surprise that there was that.
Okay.
Why don't you say that out loud? It's a disaster.
I want to be a meteorologist, the last name of that--
You're not going into stormy weather ahead. Okay, so we've got some, we've got the superintendent passed with some things on that, we don't have to take an action on that, Jerry?
Can we just get a motion, second, you go ahead and release the two surveys I had to read this, this--
Okay, motion. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second, Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, and then C, discuss and determine action related to the funding for the January 22 field trip? Any discussion?
I'm assuming, uh, COVID safety precautions are a play here.
Oh, yeah.
One of the issues, too, in this particular situation is the fact COVID was here--
Yeah.
--and the lack of ability to fundraise. And so really to that place right now where fundraising is a concern and the amount of money you need to supplement this particular trip, that's kind of what's on the table.
Right, and it didn't, what, it said the, the whole trip would be like $9,000, but they're going to use some fundraising, and so asking, you know, would the district, in this circumstance, help support that, reading, the things came in late, I know, on the agenda, but would the district, would the board make a motion to authorize the field trip and help support fundraising so that the students could go because of that circumstance? If they were not even going to do it as much as they're going to do with fundraising?
Basically providing the difference between what they can raise between now and then.
Do we have a, what, lack of terms of bucket? Do we have a bucket that we've got with Colander? Would be additional money that we had? Could we come out?
Mr. Sack, we have, we could support this with some funds.
But I guess one, one turn, one-time bucket thing?
Yeah. Okay, can we put C and D together? C and D, put them together, can they?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, motion to approve C and D, Mr. Server, second. Second, Mr. Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is the motion that up June, we are willing to go back, and just $9,000?
Yes.
Assuming there--
Yes, they're going to do some fundraising.
Okay.
I do not take--
Do you, do you want a little background on what you're looking at?
Yep.
Okay, so that, that, that trip would cost--
and the amount of money we need to supplement this particular track, that's kind of what's on the table right now.
Right, and it didn't, what, it said the whole trip would be less than nine thousand dollars, but they're going to use some fundraising, and so asking, you know, would the district, in this circumstance, help support that? Reading, the things came in late, I know, on the agenda. But would the district, would the board make a motion to authorize the field trip and help support fundraising so that the students could go because of that circumstance? They were not even able to do it as much as they were able to do with fundraising.
Basically providing the difference between what they can raise between now and then.
Do we have a, lack of term, the bucket, we have a bucket that we've got with all under? Would be additional money that we had? Could we come out?
Mr. Sack, we have, we could support this with some funds, like I said, one of the one-time bucket things. Okay. Okay, can we put C and D together? C and D go together, can't they?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Motion to approve C and D, Mr. Server, second. Second, Mr. Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is the motion that up June, we are willing to go back and she has a budget nine thousand dollars?
Yes.
Assuming there.
Yes, they're going to do some fundraising.
I.
Do you want a little background on what you're looking at?
Yep.
Okay, so that, that trip would cost almost all the field trips. We traditionally have given the about half of that out of field trips to help them, and they traditionally have raised the other half. They're going to make every effort that they can, but the window's tight. So you're probably looking under four thousand dollars.
Okay.
And every student, it's on a college campus, so every student has to be, to answer her.
And then two, you know, that was, and we don't want to take it away from any of the other field, of possibility of students. I think this is an exceptional year, so. We have the motion, and.
We're going to allow fundraising and then go on to nine thousand and ninety-one.
Yeah. Probably will be much less than that. Got the first, or then we've got the motion and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Okay, do you have any other public comments, comments? We thank you all and welcome aboard to the tritium, and we're most influential in the tritium staff. Okay. We don't expect to have any.
One part.